Okay, we record the words of Monday, February 17, 2022 Franklin Regional School Board of Directors' Regular Meeting. Stanford, let's lift the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Ms. Altieri-Hand?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Yant?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Mitterator?
Here.
Dr. Eschelman-Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Yingling?
Here.
For the present.
We're in executive session for contractual, legal, and personnel issues. The superintendent's report.
This evening, I have Dr. Jason Conway, Executive Director of the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, is going to present about the intermediate unit and its services.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Perano, and good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. Before the pandemic, we would do an annual tour of the districts to share updates about the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, and unfortunately, the pandemic, it's been three years since we've been able to do that. So I'm very happy to be back on tour. This is the 15th stop of the tour, and so tonight, so many new faces around the board. It's, I think it's a good idea maybe just to give a basic overview of the intermediate unit and some of the services that we offer. First, some thank yous. First, I want to thank the entire board for its continued support of our general operating budget over the years. Also, very specifically, many board members who have served on the intermediate unit board, specifically, Dr. Eschman-Ramey is our current IU board member, so thank you for your service to the IU board. Also, I want to thank Dr. Perano and his administrative team, working collectively and collaboratively together over the many, many years together. One of the takeaways I'd like you to have is intermediate units serve as an intermediary between the Department of Education and the member school districts. And at your tables, I have a brief handout that has much more detail for you to take a look at your leisure, and I'm just going to do many of the highlights on your handout today. Intermediate units were formed in 1971. We just celebrated our 50th anniversary, and one of the things to keep in mind about intermediate units is we do not receive direct funding from the Department of Education or the state budget. So therefore, we have to provide services that are going to bring in revenue to cover our costs when it comes to personnel and the like. So therefore, we have to operate more like a business and be really focused on high-quality services for the best possible price. And so during the pandemic, intermediate units played a very large role when it came to communication coming from the Department of Ed as well as the Department of Health. The intermediate units played a role in assisting the Department of Health when it came to those first vaccination clinics that were held in the spring. And so intermediate units are here to serve, and that's the one takeaway I'd love for you to have, is that, you know, your local intermediate unit is here to serve you and provide solutions to the things that you are encountering. At your, at your tables, you'll see on page one is, again, a brief overview of intermediate units. There are 29 of us throughout the Commonwealth, all vary in size and the number of students, but all have the same purpose. You'll see that we serve thousands of students and educators across the Commonwealth, and we also create savings for local school districts that we, that we provide services to. One great example is our PAI Unet, where the intermediate unit offers Internet services to our local districts. Also, another great example would be that of expanding educational opportunities for not only students but also educators. For instance, the IU is currently operating a leadership program for administrators throughout the county as a way in which to give back and be of service when it comes to expanding educational opportunities. If you turn to the back, you'll see on page two gives you a highlight or an overview of the organization. We're organized in five different teams. The first team is executive services, which I lead, and one of the key services that we offer in executive services is the coordination of the Westmoreland County Committee on Legislative Action. And the, and the purpose of that organization that makes up of board members, business managers, the superintendents, as well as the intermediate unit cabinet level, and the three CTC directors, is really to focus on advocacy for public education. And so we meet four times a year, receive briefings from wide variety of different groups, but more importantly, focus on what can we do locally to promote and support public education through our advocacy with our, with our legislators. When it comes to our second team and our largest team, that is our student services, and I'm joined this evening by Dr. Thomas, who's the director for our student services team. Obviously, intermediate units are, are best known for its special education services. However, we offer much more than just special education. One of those areas most recently has been in the area of safety and school security. In fact, we have Joe Rice on staff that is serving as kind of a countywide coordinator when it comes to providing assistance to school districts, when it comes to school security and safety, by providing different trainings, tabletop exercises, and the like. Our third team, technology and infrastructure services, is led by Eric Vaughn, and one of our new services is going to be providing districts with support around cybersecurity services. And so we are currently advertise, well, we are currently interviewing a specialist to come on to provide those types of services to our districts. Financial services is led by Tammy Good, and Tammy Good, one of the things that we do in financial services is provide opportunities for districts to participate in our purchasing consortiums when it comes to fuel and paper. It's always good to gather what the demand is to get the best possible price to go out to bid. And last but not least, our, our last team, curriculum services, which is led by Tim Hamel, not only they're known for the work that they do around curriculum, instruction, and assessment, but we also look for ways to improve opportunities for educators to professionally develop. And so our newest initiative is around Play Westmoreland, which is professional learning and you. And what it's going to provide is opportunities for educators to develop their path of what their interest and what their needs are when it comes to professional learning and be able to participate, not only synchronously, but asynchronously, synchronously, excuse me, when it comes to different topics that they want to learn about and earn badges along the way. So that's an overview of the intermediate unit as a whole. The third and fourth page provides you an overview of what our comprehensive plan looks like, from our mission, our vision, our shared values, and our strategic principles. And so I do want to thank you for the opportunity to give you a very brief overview of the intermediate unit. If there's one takeaway from this evening's presentation, and that is we're your local educational service agency, here to serve your needs in any way that we can possibly do so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if not, I can return to my seat and enjoy the rest of the meeting. All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. And that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Perano. Okay, I need approval of the minutes of committee of the whole meeting for September 19, 2022, the regular meeting minutes, September 19, 2022, and the committee of the whole meeting for October 3, 2022. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved.
Second?
Second, Diana. Comment? Do you have anyone in favor? Aye. Close, motion okay, fine, zero. Okay, upcoming topics and future dates.
Upcoming, upcoming topics include the comprehensive plan approval, induction plan approval, professional development plan approval, architect of record, and construction manager for heritage deconstruction, personnel, gifts, grants, and donations, and budget transfers. Future dates include November 7, a curriculum committee meeting at 5:00 PM at the administrative offices, which is in the New Linsburg building. November 14, we'll have a committee of the whole and regular board meeting, they're being consolidated due to the voting, beginning at 7:30 PM here at the Murrayville Municipal Building. On November 16, we will have a finance committee meeting at 5:00 PM at the administrative offices in the New Linsburg building. On December 5, 2022, we will have our reorganization meeting, committee of the whole meeting, and our regular board meeting beginning at 7:30 PM here at the Murrayville Municipal Building. And that concludes upcoming topics and future dates.
Thank you, Dr. Perano. Okay. Local audit report. I need a motion to accept the, do you want to read this, John? Do you want to?
Yeah.
2021-22 local audit report.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There's going to be a presentation.
Okay, Mr. Turner is here. You're up.
Thanks, board members, for having me here this evening. I just wanted to briefly, if I can, go over the results of the 2021-year fiscal year audit for the sake of the board. In front of you this evening, I've put not only a copy of the actual thick audit report itself in the bound covers, but right inside the front cover of that report is a document that I'd like you to concentrate on. It's dated for this evening, and about halfway down, it starts with a caption, "General Fund Balance Analysis." I'm going to use this synopsis, if you will, for my presentation tonight. I pull out the highlights, as I do each year for the board, from the audit report, the more salient points that I believe are of interest to the board, and go over those and try to prepare them for you in this short document. But before I go over this, just, just a couple of quick comments about the thicker audit report, the actual bound copy of the audit report. There are certain sections. As the independent auditor's opinion, which from, and from our perspective, is one of the more important sections of the report. And what we've issued for the school district this year, as we have in past years, is what's known as an unmodified opinion. And basically, what an unmodified opinion means in our profession is that the information contained in the body of that audit report is presented in conformity with the rules and regulations of our profession, and there are no departures from those rules. So in layman's terms, as I like to tell the board, that's a good thing. That's the type of opinion you want to have to be sent out to any agencies that you have to remit the audit report to. Subsequent to those pages, in the very beginning of the audit report, there's a short section on Roman numeral pages four through 12. It's known as the management discussion and analysis. And again, I always tell my board members, I know you have a lot of information to digest on a monthly basis. I was a former board member myself at my home school district, so I know what you have to read and go over. But that section, that management discussion and analysis, the purpose of that is to give the reader of the financial statements kind of a short read on the financial results of the district, not only for the year under audit, which would be the 2021 fiscal year, but also provide comparative data, 1920 versus 2021, so you can see where you ended for the current year versus the prior year. And that's some of the information I'm going to go over in this synopsis with you this evening. So again, that will help you digest the results of the audit going through that section of the audit report. And then lastly, with regard to that thick audit report, in addition to actually auditing the financial statements of the district, we're also required, based on the level of federal funding that you receive, to do a compliance audit. And in the back section of that audit is a, a portion devoted to our testing on the federal programs and shows you all of the federal programs that the district administers. For the 2021 year, we concentrated our test of compliance on the National School Lunch Program, and in the back, you will see that there were no findings of noncompliance related to that program. So again, that's a good thing. When you send this report to PDE, they'll look at that section of the audit report to see if there's any action that needs to be taken, and they will see that there, there is no action that needs to be taken, and everything was okay related to that program. So again, with regard to the thick report, those are the more salient points that I wanted to bring to your attention. Now, going back to this synopsis for this evening, if you'd be kind enough to follow along, on the first page, as I normally do, I give you a five-year history of the main operating fund of the district, which is your general fund, and show you where you ended up the year in a, in a total. So if you look at the bottom line, you could see that that fund balance ended with $13,447,177, so about a $900,000 decrease from the prior fiscal year, and we'll talk about that in a minute. When I turn to the top of page two, your fund balance, that $13 million that we just talked about, is broken down into component parts. One of those component parts, which is important from the state's perspective, is how much of that overall fund balance is not restricted for any particular purpose, but rather is available for the general operations of the district. And that portion of the fund balance is known as the unassigned portion. So I've given you a five-year history of the unassigned portion of the fund balance of the district, the general fund balance, and you can see the changes since the 1617 fiscal year. But notice in the last two fiscal years, you had a rather large decrease and then a rather large increase again in the amount of the unassigned fund balance. The main reason for that was the change in the amount of the escrow funds that the district was required to set aside with the municipality related to your elementary school project. So as that went up or down, that affected how much money was available for unassigned general operations. And you, as you can see, that number dropped in the 2021 fiscal year, thereby increasing the unassigned balance that you have available for overall operations. When you look at that particular unassigned amount, the reason I always say that's important is because the Department of Education looks at that amount and tries to determine what is that unassigned balance as a percentage of your budget in the current year. And for the Franklin Regional School District, that unassigned amount is about 9.9% of your budget. And why that's important is because back in 2003, there was an Act 48 that says, in order for any school district to raise their real estate tax millage beyond the annual index increase that they give all school districts, in order, if you ever had to do that, you have to pass a budget whereby your unassigned fund balance is at or below, in Franklin Regional's case, at or below 8% of your budget. Now, you do pass that budget with a unassigned fund balance at or below 8% because that's required, because at that particular time, you don't know the actual results of your audit. For the year ended June 30, 21, you actually ended up at 9.9%, so you're slightly over that PDE threshold for, for raising millage beyond the annual index. I just call that to your attention. In our profession, there's an organization known as the Government Finance Officers Association, because everyone wants to know what's an adequate unassigned fund balance to have, and their studies indicate that, on average, you should try to have two months' worth of expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. So that third paragraph on page two, I do the math for the board, and as you can see, two months at the Franklin Regional School District is a little over $10 million. So your unassigned is at 6.2, so you're under their objective, but because of the other monies you have restricted or committed for certain purposes, if you wanted to, you could raise your unassigned to this $10 million. But in so doing, that would throw you even more over that 8% cap that we just talked about, that PDE mandates that you stay at or below. So the district has, in my opinion, has prudently maintained an unassigned fund balance at, at the level that it's at. That's where you want to be. The difference between that unassigned and that total fund balance that I talked about on page one has been, one, set aside for that escrow with the municipality for the elementary project, a little over $2 million, and then another $4 million of that difference has been committed by the board for debt service and also for Peasars rate increases. So those are the components that make up your total fund balance of the $13 million we talked about on the first page. On page three, staying with the general fund again, is a five-year history of your overall revenues and a five-year history of your overall expenditures. If you look at the last line under revenues, you can see an increase of about $2.7 million for that particular year, and below that, I just note the reasons for that increase. An increase in current real estate tax collections as a result of a, a millage increase of about $843,000, increase in delinquent tax collections, almost $500,000, and then federal funding that all school districts got for COVID-19, in your particular case, about $528,000. Although those three don't make up the total for that increase, those are the major items that came into play in that overall increase. The expenditure's down at the bottom, same thing. You can see for the 2021 fiscal year, expenditures were up almost $4.3 million, a little over 7%, and I just notate for you the reasons for that increase. Regular program instruction cost, about up $1.6 million from the previous fiscal year, increase in debt service payments of about $725,000, and then transfers, the increase in your transfers to your capital reserve and technology funds, as you usually do on an annual basis, that increased by a little over $1 million. So again, that didn't add up to the total reason for the increase, but they were the major components lending into that increase. You turn to page four to show you, again, a five-year history of the monies you have taken out, appropriated out of your general fund as part of your budget, and sent to the capital reserve fund and technology fund. And keep in mind, those are other pots of money that you maintain in-house for improvements and technology acquisitions that the board deems are necessary. So it's not as if those monies are going outside the district, they're just going to a, monies that are reserved for other purposes within the districts, and you can see how much you've contributed into those funds over the last five years. At the bottom of page four, I always take a look at how the district did budget versus actual. The first bullet point talks about revenues, actual revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by $2.3 million. In the main areas were the current income taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and delinquent taxes, those combined were over budget by almost $1.4 million, the main reason for that increase. There are increases in other areas, but those three items were the bulk of the increase. The second bullet point down, actual expenditures exceeded budget expenditures by $492,000. But on your budget level, that only represents about 0.8%, so that's, that's close, a prudent spending plan for the district. A majority of the areas, the functional areas of expenditures across the district, were under budget for the 2021 fiscal year, with one notable exception, and that was the amount that you actually transferred to your other funds. That particular area into the capital reserve and technology, that was over budget by about $1.3 million. Otherwise, most other general areas were under budget for this fiscal year. You had planned to use, when you did this budget, when the board approved this budget, you had planned to use about 2.7, almost 2.8% of your prior year reserves to balance your budget, but in actuality, you only needed to use a little over $900,000 to break even budget versus actual for the year. Budget versus actual information in a little bit more detail I just indicate to you is on page seven in that thick audit report, so at your leisure, if you care to look at those particular numbers. On page five, a little bit of information about the other funds. This operating results, this net position that I show here governmental for the last two years, in addition to the general fund that we just talked about, and your capital reserve and your technology, not only have to look at the district on a short-term view, which is what we've been talking about on an annual basis with a budget, but you also have to look at the results for the district on a consolidated basis, as if they were a consolidated corporation, where we throw all of the numbers together, and we also add in the assets of the district, the buildings, and we also throw in the debt service obligations of the district. So when I do that, when you see that first line there that says net position with a deficit million of $30 million compared to last year, the main reason that this district and almost all of my districts show a deficit when we do that consolidated look is that embedded in that consolidation, you're required to show your pro-rata share of the overall Peasars pension obligation at the state level, and also, you're required to show your contractual obligations for post-employment benefits for your retirees, and those two numbers combined are over $100 million for the Franklin Regional School District. So when we were just talking about having a $13 million fund balance, and then we factor in all of those required liabilities that you have to show, you can understand why your net position from that perspective is a negative $30 million. And as I always tell my board, it's not as if you have to write a check to Peasars tomorrow for $100 million. It's an accounting issue that has to be reflected in these financial statements in order for me to issue what I told you at the very beginning, that unmodified opinion for the district as a whole. In the middle of that schedule on page five, we talk about the food service operations, another important fund at the district, but naturally, a lot smaller than your general fund. The second line under that caption, "Change in Net Position," is really a fancy way of talking about a profit or loss for the year. And you can see for the 2021 fiscal year, we had a loss of almost $76,000 compared to the previous years. But when you look at the main areas, operating revenues, operating expenses, and federal and state subsidies, there were, at least for the operating revenues and federal and state subsidies, you see major swings in those between the two years. And the main reason for that was the funding, how the district received its funding as a result of COVID-19 over those two fiscal years. You went from having operating revenue where you're paying at the point of service to being funded significantly by state and federal subsidies in the COVID year, and that's why those numbers changed so much between those years. At the bottom, just again, I tell you the results of the other three funds, and we've talked about them, the capital reserve, the energy fund, and the capital improvement fund, which has most of the activity as a result of the elementary construction project, as you would expect. And I think for the most part, everyone, that's, that's the main items, the highlights that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, tell you a little bit about the main more salient points in the thick audit report that I feel are most important for the board to know. If anybody has any questions related to the information I just discussed, I'll be more than happy to answer them if I can. If you see anything in that report at a subsequent date, you have time to digest, and you think that you have questions for me, you can either contact me directly at the office or through the district itself, or obviously, I'll always be happy to come back to, in front of the board and answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Can I, can I just ask you a question about the delinquent tax collection? It might be right in front of me, so forgive me.
Okay.
A lot of numbers. How does that compare to previous years?
In terms of being over?
Right, the amount.
Well, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that to you. If memory serves me right, when I stood before this board last year, that was one of the reasons, there was an increase in delinquent tax collections in the prior year as well. So I think at least over the last two fiscal years, and I haven't seen the result of 2122 yet, but I will shortly, there's been a little bit of a trend there of an increase in those collections.
And what do you attribute that to?
That might be a better question for Mr. Perry.
I'm not to put you on the spot.
If you look at a two-year timeframe, it's actually pretty smooth, but COVID definitely created some lumpiness. In the 1920 school year, those delinquents are remitted to the district quarterly from the County Tax Claim Bureau. So that April to June period of 2020, we really didn't see hardly any collections at all because the tax claim office was closed as a result of COVID-19. So we got a lot of catch-up contribution, or collections in the 2021 school year. So 1920 was lower than usual. So 1920 was lower than usual, 2021 is higher than usual, 2122, which we're working on closing out, and Mark's going to begin auditing here soon, is maybe slightly higher, but it's not nearly as lumpy as those prior two years. So it all goes down to COVID-19 and nobody being in the office actually collecting those taxes at the tax claim bureau.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner. 2021 local audit report.
So moved, Scott.
Second.
Seconded.
Mark.
Mark. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion for the treasures report for 2022, September 2022.
So moved, Scott.
Move, Scott.
Second, Diana.
Move, seconded, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, nine zero. List of bills. Paid bills, general fund, $3,523,528.16. Athletic fund, $8,748.69. Total paid bills, $3,532,276.85. Unpaid bills, general fund, $1,763,180.78. Technology fund, $75,146.96. Capital reserve fund, $36,678.81. Athletic fund, $26,649.50. Construction fund of $445.25 for a total of unpaid bills of $1,902,101.30 for a grand total of $5,434,378.15. Food service is zero for a grand total, including food service, $5,434,378.15. Need a motion for list of bills.
No move.
Move, Scott, Mark.
Second.
Seconded, Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, nine zero. Public comments. First one up is Fran Giuliani.
I'm Fran Chalimi, 4223 Hills Church Road, Murraysville, PA. It's an honor to be here tonight, and I thank you so much for each of your time. I'm going to just read the mission statement and the vision statement, and I would like each, all of us, to think about this statement as it pertains to us tonight. The mission statement, "The Franklin Regional School District, we, the Franklin Regional School community strive excellence, learning, individual growth, community, achievement, and citizenship in all we do." I guess I should say that I've had three students who have been happy at Franklin Regional graduated, the third is finishing her college year this year. I have a master's degree in counseling. I do group therapy on a regular basis for adults and teens. And, you know, group therapy, you really want to promote self-esteem and respect among the group members and for each other on an individual basis. And I'm sorry to say, I feel like I'm wasting my time here. I've asked for some things. I'm going to read the vision statement. "The Franklin Regional School District vision is we prepare students for success beyond high school by developing critical thinking skills, engaging in collaborative problem-solving, practicing effective communication strategies, experiencing opportunities to be creative, and promoting citizenship." Now, I think what I heard was that there's millions that are being spent or overspent. I'm not sure if that's exactly what I heard because I'm not a financial person. And I would like to challenge us as how is that promoting excellence in our economy, which is faltering right now? And I also would like to know how we're promoting excellency and transparency by the curriculum, I believe is still not posted. Now, I've brought this up four times in the last four months, and I have not been given a date that that will be achieved. And I'm challenging my school board with two assistant superintendents, and the last curriculum meetings, I believe, are nine months apart. That is unacceptable as a taxpayer and a citizen and a parent who may have grandchildren or may not have grandchildren in this school district. And I think we're losing a lot of key good people to homeschool and hybrid school. What's left, I ask? What's left when you're losing the good kids who don't, who aren't heard, the parents who, like me, I'm never given an answer at these meetings? I sent an email nine months ago about Persepolis. Do you know only one of you replied to my email? I don't have to vote for you. I am a very well-respected citizen, and I'm confident that if I ran for this school board, I would receive it. And I have a group of individuals who are conservative, who would very gladly take up the position. I'm not threatening you, I'm just asking you to wake up. And I want to ask, how are we promoting citizenship when recently Christopher Columbus was called a terrorist in our 10th grade social studies class? The materials that were sent home, my my respected citizen will address this issue after me. I know I don't have much time. I would also like to say that transparency, the definition, is allowing light to pass through so that objects behind can be distinctly seen. We are not being distinctly seen in this community. This school board, this school agenda, there is no transparency that I have seen. Homecoming was a farce. I was appalled to be at Homecoming recently and see that there were two men and five women on the homecoming court. When was this passed?
Your four minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Helen Elliott.
Mr. President, may I make a couple comments?
Sure.
First off, there are finance committee meetings that you are welcome to attend. We just had, yeah, we just had one. Second off, there's curriculum committee meetings, and I realize we haven't had one for a little while. We have been hiring people into those positions. You're welcome to attend those. Second, or third, I would like to say that the French curriculum was displayed and no one came to look at it during the 30-day preview time. So there is a lot of transparency. And yes, our budget is millions of dollars. We support 3,200 kids. We have, what, over 200 teachers? We have multiple buildings. We have debt service that we need to meet. Yes, our budget is going to be millions of dollars to support the kids. Thanks.
Also, I believe the curriculum that you're looking for is actually the list of novels that are taught at the secondary level. If you go out onto board docs and under, in the library section, there's a document out there that contains that list of novels.
I would have never found that.
And one other item, as far as curriculum committee, there are several people in the audience who, we had a lively discussion over Persepolis.
I did.
So, and it was, you couldn't attend it?
I did send an email before the meeting.
But you you said you couldn't attend the meeting?
Yeah, I was working. I have work Monday nights.
Okay. Well, that's all right. But I just want to make it clear that it was a lively conversation on both sides of that book. So we listened to both sides of that book or of the argument. So it was open and transparent, and that's the end of this public.
I just want to say that studies that have done, that have had that book, have deeper self-esteem and a feeling of inability to promote change. So that's the studies coming from kids that are. I just hope it's not promoted again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to, for those who are looking for that listing of the novels that is on the website, it is a little bit where you may not look for it right away. It is on the, if you go to the main page on the website, if you go to the board docs section, okay, under the school board tab at the top, if you go under FRSD board docs, there are multiple tabs on the right-hand side, and there's a tab on the far right that's library. And there's, then that brings you to a drop-down documents for public view. There's several documents there. One of those is Franklin Regional Middle School novel list, Franklin Regional High School senior, high school novel list. So that's where that is provided, okay?
Why it's on the curriculum.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Helen Elliott?
Oh, good evening.
Is your address someone?
Yes, Helen Elliott, and it's 3166 Chestnut Street, Murraysville, 15668. And she mentions curriculum, and you guys only talk about the novels, but I I'm here to talk about more than just novels. I understand, this just came to my attention in the last week. Understand that it is old. It is 2019. I made sure each one of you had a packet of information that a parent brought to my attention. And this this top sheet here was an assignment that a student had to do in class, and it was so upsetting to her. I mean, it says, "These are the letters and diary entries that show horrible things that he did to Native Americans." Sorry, we're talking about Columbus. And he and his men killed many indigenous people. And after being shown this information, you got a packet on this also, that is very misleading. I read through it and said, well, I'm getting confusing messages in this. These kids had to draw a response to the text and the picture. And this young lady was so upset about this assignment that she came home crying to her mother because she was.
I didn't get that.
She did drawing.
Wait, can you stop one second?
Stop.
I don't have that. I only have this.
I didn't get, I didn't get that document either.
Oh, now, that one, I only had four or five of, so you're going to have to kind of share them.
I see yours for 10 seconds, I'm fine.
This was, this student.
I didn't realize it was eight pages.
Let me resume my count. This student was in fourth grade at Heritage Elementary School in 2019. And, I mean, she ended up drawing pictures that said, "Get them," and and all this stuff. It's terrible. And Christopher Columbus did horrible things to Native Americans, like kill them, because that's the message that she got out of these documents, which, by the way, came from a online thing called Teachers Pay Teachers. That's an interesting concept, as I was trying to look into that. So this student came home crying about this assignment, and she was so upset, her mother investigated. And when her mother got a hold of the teacher involved, the teacher said that she ditched the problematic lessons and went with her own culture-centered curriculum. And that's this stuff. And when the parent went to the principal and said, "How could this curriculum get passed?" You know, did the school board approve this curriculum or the curriculum committee? The principal's response was, "We let the teachers do whatever they want." So I know that I've been told that this was handled disciplinarily, whatever that means, back then, but like I said, this just came to my attention. Now, I've been told at at least one meeting, if not more, that CRT is not being taught in our schools. Well, back in 2019, it was happening. So I don't know what else in our curriculum today, and it really, really concerns me. And I hope it concerns you. And I'm looking forward to the next curriculum meeting. I hope that they don't just deal with books, that we deal with actual.
Okay, Helen, your four minutes are up. Thank you.
No, I have a couple more seconds. I want to say thank you to our football team. They're doing a great job. And I want to thank our band, who are representing Franklin Regional fantastically. And by the way, if you don't have your fruit, I'll be happy to help you afterwards. Get your fruit for the band. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like a copy of the rest of that information.
We'll provide you with a copy. In regard to that assignment, that is not approved district curriculum. That came to the attention of the principal as well as the assistant superintendent at the time, and it was addressed appropriately. I'm not going to get too much more into that because it is personnel-related. However, if the board would like more explanation behind the details, we can do that in an executive session.
Thank you. Jan Gray.
Hi, and thank you all for allowing me to speak of this.
Is your address, Jan?
Oh, 1235 12 Oaks Court. My concern is curriculum and the fact that teachers can and do do what they want. Over 12 years ago, my child was forced to watch a horror movie, one that I wouldn't watch, Silence of the Lambs. Another student was given a fully X-rated pornographic, the class was given this fully pornographic, X-rated assignment that landed in my hands from a friend, and I showed it to a high school principal, and nothing changed. At the time, I thought these were one-off things, but I find that I'm hearing more and more that teachers are doing what they want, and the Columbus was a terrorist is still being taught currently in high school social studies. And it seems to me that we should have curriculum across the board, that every class should be learning from approved curriculum. And as you just said, Dr. P, that was not approved curriculum, and it's still getting to our children. And better school districts have a policy that all material from the classroom is to be in the library. Whether I have time with four children and lots of sports to go to the library and look at it isn't isn't necessarily the idea. As you said, the French curriculum had been posted. The idea is that it's transparent, and if somebody has a problem with something, coming home, everybody knows that it's true and it it's in the library, and the teachers are all held accountable. Now, the vast majority of teachers at Franklin Regional have been wonderful, but we know that there's differing opinions, and that's why we need a consistent curriculum, and everything should be online and in the library. Should I want to drive in and take a look at what is being taught in social studies or what movies my child was forced to watch? I mean, that's disturbing. That's nightmarish stuff. It shouldn't happen if there's an agreed-upon curriculum across a grade level amongst the social studies. For instance, the head of curriculum should know absolutely everything that's being done and nothing outside of that. And teachers don't just go and search, oh, why was Christopher Columbus a terrorist? Well, somebody said there was a diary that was found that he was killing people. May be true, but there really is no proof of any of that. And to start rewriting and re, you know, re-educating our children from what we all have learned and the respect we have for our country. Our country does a lot of phenomenal things, and there are teachers who taught my children that they that they were born with silver spoons in their mouth, and that they were taught about religion the way they were taught about Santa Claus.
That's your four minutes, Jan. That's your four minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like, Jamie, are the teachers of Franklin permitted to deviate from, from the established curriculum and teach?
Whatever they want?
Whatever they choose?
No, they are not permitted.
Well, you know, my concern here is, and, and I think the public's concern as well, is that I, I think there should be some really nasty discipline for anyone who deviates with that, without going before the curriculum committee or this administration. My point here is, the examples that we've heard here tonight, you can't unring the bell. And somehow, I think we need to get in front of this, instead of trying to deal with it from behind. And, and, I mean, I'm just saying, I hear, I heard, I know that you, you have a disciplinary procedure, but the teachers, the, let's call them the teachers that are not on the right side, know that they can, they can do this, and so we're, so we've already, we've already influenced the students. I mean, I just saw a second of that document you have there, that, which says something about Christopher Columbus enslaved millions of people. I mean, I mean, that's not even an accurate statement, and, and, but that's the information that was passed out. And I'm just concerned that we're, that, you know, anyway. And I know you can't just off-the-cuff respond to that, but I'd like to understand better. Thank you.
My concern also is evidence-based material, and I, I know you value, we, all of us value evidence-based content. And the one document was, the recent document was from Teachers Pay Teachers. I'm real familiar with that. I have stuff on it. But it's, some of it's evidence-based, and some of it's not. And I'd like to, do we have a rubric for the teachers? Like, that, that, you know, when they go and select the content, if it's vetted, or, you know, because they're professionals, and they, they need their freedom to, to educate our, our kids. So how do we manage that? I should know.
I don't necessarily know that we provide them a rubric to go outside for outside resources in terms of vetting it and not vetting it. That's something we can certainly explore. That being said, some of the, you know, I look at Columbus, fourth grade, you know, looking at that, the, what was provided, I had seen that before, to be quite honest with you, and it's not appropriate. However, I do wanna caution, because especially at the high school level, some of the, this debate and discussion about, about this very topic is actually appropriate for, for our kids to engage in. And, and in essence, citizens, actually, I'm gonna answer your question. Citizens are able to look at both sides of an argument, look at it, look for primary sources on both sides of that argument, and come up with their position on it. Quality teachers do not infuse their own opinions into that, but they challenge kids and their beliefs and their positions. That's part of being a citizen, is when you look at information, and you look at topics, and you take the facts, or what you perceive, perceive to be the strongest facts, and form your own opinion. And then citizens have to defend that opinion at some level. And so I just wanna be very cautious. As we talk about curriculum, there is approved curriculum, and, and there's, and that's, that should be taught. And there are things that shouldn't be taught. But with that being said, especially as our kids get older, we have kids in the high school who are taking college-level courses. They have to be able to form arguments. They have to be able to defend those arguments in writing, as well as through speech. And, and I'm talking as a parent, and I'm also talking as an educator. That type of discourse and dialogue is what our students should be able to leave here and be able to do. And so by no means should we be indoctrinating them into a, a pathway of thought. On either side, and you mentioned conservative, conservative or liberal, that's not our job. Our job is to get kids to research, to form opinions, to, to form hypotheses about situations, and to debate it and support it, and to be challenged, and how to respond appropriately. One of the biggest things I, I see right now, in our culture, in our country, is an inability to have civil discourse. And until we can get to the point where we can have civil discourse, listen to the other person, acknowledge their thoughts and their beliefs and their opinions in a respectful manner, and then provide my own rebuttal or thoughts on it, that's ultimately what we're looking for, and that's what we want from our kids. And if you don't believe kids, even a fourth grade can develop an argument, come to my house. Sometimes I don't want them to, but they do. And, and so that's the challenge. Yes, we wanna make sure we're not indoctrinating kids, and we have, we'll put things in place to make sure that that's not happening. But by all means, we want our kids to think, we want them to challenge, we, we want them to, to be leaders.
But they have to have both sides.
They have to have both sides. You're right, Mr. Yan.
And that's not what happened here.
That's not what happened here, absolutely. It's interesting, because as we talk about this, and not to take it there, I watched a documentary on, on the history of Italian-Americans. And it's a four-part, four-part PBS series, and it talks about the struggle of Italian-Americans from when they began to come into this country in the 1800s, and how Columbus Day was really for them, a day to, to say to everyone else, "We matter, we belong." You can't, and at this point, the Italians couldn't even worship in the churches, they had to worship in the basement. And this was their chance to express belief in their culture. But our kids should know that. They should know, if, if, a primary source, and it's someone's opinion, they should get to see that, too. Fourth grade, probably not, it's probably not the level they're at. But in high school, they sure should. But both sides is absolutely, is where we should be, and that's what we talked about with Persepolis as well. I'm gonna be done talking.
I, I think two things are, are important to get out of this. Number one is that what you said is exactly true. Number two is that our teachers should be encouraged, or instructed, if you will, to be cautious and not to look at 1492 with 2022 standards, morals, whatever you want, you know? So that's, and if, if you don't provide them with that, then they have no reference to even understand what Christopher Columbus, or anyone else, did back in that timeframe.
It's judging people by their context and what, of the time that they lived.
Exactly. And, and then fourth graders would be impressionable to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, Amy Sheridan?
Hi, Amy Sheridan, 2785 Walker Court in Export. I came tonight to comment on the October 3 presentation of the comprehensive plan for the district, which we talked about a little bit tonight, too. My son and I were fortunate enough to be members of the committee that began the process to create the plan this spring, and it was so heartening for me to see that the detailed plan that resulted from it, and that the district has put forward. I think a lot of people in this room were, were in those meetings, and that was a good example of, of civil discourse, and this district trusting the voices of the parents, the administrators, the teachers, and the students. There were a lot of students in the, in the, in the meetings, and their voices were heard. It was really a great experience for us. So to me, the comprehensive plan as presented really does reflect and build on the many conversations between the teachers and parents, between the administrators and students, and among all the community and, community stakeholders and the staff members. The, the discussions around me those spring evenings acknowledge the challenges our young people face, and this response illustrates clearly the vision for education in the very near future, and the steps needed to make that vision a reality. The comprehensive plan reflects, in my opinion, the importance that this community has always and will continue to place on investing in students, giving them the chance to learn and grow as a contributing citizen, and I'm excited to see the progress continue.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Sue Engel Fritz?
Good evening, Susan Algen Fritz, Mayor Drive, Murraysville. So, last school board meeting, I brought to your attention that FR teachers are surveying our children with pronouns they wish to identify regarding gender. I have reached out to both principals and administration and just can't seem to get an answer, honest answer. One avoids the question completely, and the other one said, "We do not encourage this," which really means they tolerate, approve it. But yet, here we are with another year, and it's still happening. I wish to submit proof that this survey is happening, and I wish this to be submitted into the official minutes. So here, this is for you. I also wish to bring the, to the board's attention an email that my daughter received today from the district. Please check out the Google form below. With the help of Ms. Kara Kelly, our University of Pittsburgh Social Services liaison, we are able to run four groups throughout the year. Each group will meet during lunch in our ninth period, and will focus on one of these topics: how to stay drama-free, how to build positive friendships, how to minimize stress, and how to work through life, tough life situations. Grief, loss, divorce, new-to-FR. Students, if you are interested, please complete the Google form below. Once we receive your response, we will contact your parent guardian to give you permission to join a group by signing and returning document for us. I wish to submit this email for your minutes as well. What is alarming to me is the fact that you state, "Once we receive your response, we will contact your parent guardian to give you permission to join a group." Where is the transparency in parent communication in this prior to sending this to our children, who are minors? What plans you have in place where a child signs up for one of these said groups, and then you ask for parental permission, and the parent says, "No"? What else are you exposing our children to without parental consent? It appears this district is using, is purring or parental authority, again, asking gender ID questions. You have a play that identifies each character's with pronouns, introducing graphic novels with pornography. You brought in co-ed bathrooms, you just label it differently. Parents are tired of your robotic response of "Call me" after emails. Parents are tired of the lack of communication and can't seem to get answers straightforward to their questions. Parents are tired of the lack of response to public comments, but parents are not going away. This time, instead of asking for an opt-out policy, I am requesting that you create an opt-in policy moving forward and retroactive for non-academic programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We can move on to consent agenda items. Items to remove from the consent agenda for separate action by board members. We have St. Vincent Prevention, we have eight. Presley Ridge, Gifts and Grants, Personnel, FRSD Comprehensive Plan, FRSD Induction Plan, and FRSD Professional Development Plan. I'm sorry, seven. I need a motion for the seven consent agenda items. Some moved. Move Scott?
Second Mark.
Second Mark. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda items? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Joint Purchasing Consortium for 2022/23 gasoline and diesel fuel, Mr. John Perry?
Good evening again. The WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium convened again to bid diesel and gasoline covering the second quarter of the year, so October through December. We're asking the board to approve these awards to Gutman Energy for both the diesel and the gasoline. The diesel price would be just north of $4.41 a gallon, and the unleaded gasoline just north, or just shy of $3.29 per gallon, a little bit lower on both of those than the prior bid. And this round, the district had specified the quantities of 7,500 gallons of diesel and 9,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline. So again, this just represents a portion of our anticipated need through the year, but we're trying to average in the costs and hopefully get better prices as we progress through the year.
So, what, what, what was the difference? Why, I mean, is, is there a potential difference?
Last, last bid covering July through September, the diesel was $4.61, so about 20 cents less, and the gasoline was $3.91.
Oh, so you're...
So the gasoline was, you know, about 15 percent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the...
No move.
Mark? Second advance. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. All right, approval for solicitor. I put this on the agenda. And we had a meeting, and we had a poll from the board, and the motion was to approve DeBarrow, Matta, and Cambest, and the vote was 5-4.
We didn't take a vote.
I didn't say vote. I said, "We took a..."
You just said vote. We did not vote.
I'm sorry, we took a straw poll, not a vote.
Mr. President, again, I asked the question that I asked earlier. You say that that's a recommendation to the board?
That's the recommendation to the board, yes.
From, from who, sir?
Excuse me?
From who, sir?
From us, who took the straw poll. It came back 5-4. It came back Dambro, Matta, and Cambest over MBM, I believe it was. Am I right in that?
Well, you're right in what you said, but you're wrong in what should happen. You, we can't take what was said in a straw vote and put that on the agenda.
I'm not making a motion to approve, Dambro, I need a motion and a second.
Okay, so then I'd like to make, make a motion that we approve Manello, Brusco, and Manella.
You can't have two motions at the same time, I just...
Well, then how do we get that on there, Mr. Solicitor?
You can do it one of two ways. You can have a, have one of the motions first, one of the motions second, if the first motion fails, or you can vote for whatever candidate you feel that firm you'd like.
I object to the way this is even written.
I would say just go to a vote.
Just, all right.
Put them both on and go to a vote.
All right, we'll make, change the motion to approve Dambro, Matta, Cambest, or MBM.
I would put a motion in to put both firms on, and we, we do a vote.
Okay.
So that it's on record.
And can we not have discussion about why we are voting the way we're voting? You know, there should be some discussion.
We can do the motion, we do the motion first.
You do the motion first, then you get the conversation.
And then we have our discussion.
You can discuss it, so, once it's made.
We have two motions on the table at the same time, so you would have to withdraw your motion first.
I was asking for a motion, 'cause I can't make a motion.
We got a solicitor sitting here, gentlemen.
As I said, there's a few ways to do it. I think that the consensus right now sounds like, we'll have one motion, and you can vote for either...
Or.
Either firm. You say the name of the firm that you would like.
So, is, is it my understanding that every, some person has to nominate each person?
Well, I think that the motion was, though.
Motion's already made.
I think that the motion was made, and I'm not sure who made it behind me.
I, I'd just like to hear it, so I have to do it.
The motion was to, to have a motion, having both firms' names on.
I'll second it.
And then vote for whichever one.
Did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, we have Kevin, motion, second by Bill. All right. Any comments before we do this? Okay.
Open for discussion now.
That's what I said, comments, before we do this.
Okay, I have a few comments I'd like to make. First of all, I have done a list of pros and cons, and I'm gonna pass this out to the board members, and I'd appreciate any feedback, if you have any, as we're going through this. And we can give one to Donna for... So if we start out, and let me just show you, on this side is DMC, which is Mr. Matt... On this side is DMC, which is Mr. Matta's firm. And on this side is the other firm of Manello, Brongo, and Mialo. So the tops, the pros for each one, the bottoms are the cons.
I wondered if we were not.
So, do you have a copy, Bill?
We'll share, we'll share.
Oh, I have another one. So with the pros for, for Mr. Matta is that he's familiar with the district and his fees are a little less than the Manellas. On the pros for Mr., for the Manello, Brongo, Manella, and I'm just going to start using MBM for them. The pros are that one of the things that they do, and they actually gave us a copy, is we have a school director's handbook, which has pertinent information in it. They have a diverse legal experts as far as their construction, architectural, IEP, and special ed. They have professional development for faculty on PDE policy and legislative, legislative changes, annual client evaluations, client alerts and newsletters, and their excellent communication. The cons under the DMC, lack of feedback, lack of response to school board. Communities' parents need to hire solicitors because of their limitations and their expertise, lack of educational information for the staffs. And the cons under MBM are is the learning curve of our district and the players and their fees. So that's what I have put out for everybody to use. These are my observations. If anybody else would like to comment, I welcome any comments.
Anybody else have a comment?
I would like to, Mr. President, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
When somebody makes a disparaging comment about you, you should have the right to confront that person. First, when she, a board member makes a comment that, um, things that limit us, we do all of the things that were mentioned by the other firm. We've done them here in this firm in the past, both under this superintendent and the former superintendent. The issue with the construction, that was a board's decision to go get special counsel. That was not because we couldn't handle it. In fact, after you relieved that, that person, I resolved the issue. So some of the, the comments there are just not accurate. And I just wanted the public to be aware of that. The board's going to vote, how the board's going to but clearly, we've had these discussions. I've addressed issues that some of the board members wanted to address in executive session when I was asked of them.
Okay, any other comments? Yes.
Yes. I, I believe also that MBM was the most qualified solicitor that complied with the RFP. There were four solicitors who, who applied and two of them met the RFP requirements. Before I continue, Mr. Matta, since certain things are discussed in executive session, what's, what's, what are we allowed to say in public and what aren't we allowed to say in public regarding choosing the solicitor?
Again, that's the issue that you'd like to talk about. If, as long as it's not information that is executive in, in nature. So if it was a, if you want to address an issue that, um, I, I would not want you to talk about if it was about personnel, if it was about litigation, those type of things. But clearly, a, a few of you would like to try to prove your point. And that's fine.
Can you also answer another question regarding what is discussed in executive session and the sunshine law?
I can, if you have a question over that, yes.
And, and the process of selecting a solicitor under the sunshine law, is, is it appropriate how we handled it?
I don't know because I was never, I was told to exit the time that you've discussed what you discussed. So I was not there to be able to fill a pint on that.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm, I'm not an attorney. And I don't pretend to be, but it would seem to me that where we have a motion on the floor and one of the candidates on that motion is defending himself to the board, this is, this has to be, if not improper, highly improper. I'm sorry.
Well, he's just trying to defend himself on something.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, he's
Mr. Yant.
I, I understand, I understand the fact that you, that, that you feel that you've been wronged. But I don't think this, I don't think this is the arena for that.
I don't think it's the arena for what a few of the board members are trying to do either, but that's
I think maybe we need another attorney to straighten that out.
So we, we should not explain why we want to vote?
Vote.
But you just said that
Well, and I think when you, when you make comments that are inaccurate, no different than when Mr. Yant asked us to respond to people that come to the microphone that are inaccurate, to respond to them. I assumed he'd want that same thing now.
Have I made an inaccurate statement?
I have not responded to anything that you said. I responded to things that the petition lady sent. You asked me a question, I responded to that. I, I didn't
Right. I'm very concerned about the, what, how, how we've come to these conclusions. Very concerned. Not having counsel in executive session. And, and I do, I do want to support MBM. And when you said, "Some of us want to play games," or not sure how you phrased it, took me back. I'm, I'm not playing games. This is supposed to be a professional process of, of selecting a professional. So, and part of that needs, I mean, it all needs to be in public, right? How, how we come to our selection and conclusion or not? It doesn't need to be public or it, okay.
Certainly, they are.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Right, but
And we each have our own. I mean, you can vote for whoever you want to vote for.
A question that I have on both firms is, and I think we kind of brought it up. Who's the backup in case the solicitor can't be at any meeting? We have brought that question up and we really haven't gotten an answer for
Mr. Matta
I responded in my interview
I sent you a email on Saturday.
And I sent, I sent in a retainer letter.
Yes, I sent that to you Saturday.
I did, I've addressed it every time.
Because I didn't see anything on the other side, but if there even was a response for that.
I thought it was
Thank you, Gary, if you did.
Yeah, I thought it just was generic and just said, "Somebody from the office, not a specific person." But correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That was not, my, my response was clear that it was Joe Del Fons. It would be my
The other firm was the one that, was anybody who was available from the office.
No, you were to ask who would be our second solicitor.
I did ask. And I, the president of the company sent me a letter saying, "Who's everywhere on staff and available is who you're going to get."
Okay, but we didn't
I showed that, I showed that to the board last board meeting. It was sent to me in what was that, September? It's late September? I have it. Anyway. Is there any other questions?
I, I just want to make a comment, Mr. President. I'm sure when I vote, I'm going to disappoint everyone because while I'm not in favor of Mr. Matta, the, the other choice is not acceptable to me either. And the reason for that is that I believe that they were dishonest with us in their presentation. And I only reference that by the fact that we were told at, at our presentation of the attorneys who would represent us. And one week later, the, the senior attorney who was to represent us on, one of the, up to us resigned from that firm and left. And I, I can't believe that that person didn't know that at the time that he spoke to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Wolf, if you would, pull the board and see the button.
Ms. Altieri.
MBM.
Dr. Eschelman, Ramey.
MBM.
Mr. Mederator.
Quite honestly, neither one. The more qualified firm was one that I had a question on, but we didn't get a senior.
I'd like to add to that. We requested information on if we could have a different lead attorney, and we never got that information back, which is very disappointing.
I don't know whether, because we have two choices here. But when I sat and did a deep analyzation of all four firms, one disqualified themselves right away, another one kind of secondary disqualified, disqualified themselves. Anderson, by far and away, had a deep, deep, deep enrichment of covering a lot of school districts with a very broad thing. But the only thing that I brought up when we were talking to the attorneys, which I didn't like, and I'm, I'm all for what's the best for the Franklin Regional School District, for the district and for the kids. And the, the part that I didn't like was that the attorney that they said would be our representative was a very articulate 25-year attorney. But the question I posed was, "How much time do they have as school district attorney?" And the answer I got was, "None." And for, for that, that to me kind of put them out. But that's not saying that firm is not good. Because if you'd see the, if the, if the folks here would see the depth of that firm, I forget how many they have, maybe 20 people? Is that about, right marked, about 20 for school district they had?
30, it was 30.
They had a tremendous depth. And this is nothing against Mr. Matta. I'm, I'm just looking at deep depth, what can be the best for our school district. So I guess my question, will I have to vote for one of the two or pick up Anderson because that would be what I would put up?
You have to add another motion to that?
First, it's Andrews. It's not Anderson, it's Andrews.
Andrews? I'm sorry. Thank you.
And I did like them as well, but based on how the RFP was written and a court, and the same thing is what Bill just talked about. They came there with a primary solicitor and a secondary solicitor. And then they motioned that the secondary would be the primary solicitor that night when they only had one year worth of school. And the RFP clearly states they need, need to have 10 years of school district experience. So to me, they violate the RFP.
And, and Mr. Krimsky, in, in that meeting, we had requested, could they provide an alternate?
Correct.
And the, the lead, the, the main speaker in, in those interviews was tremendous. I mean, she was just, just dynamo. And we, we requested, well, could we possibly have a different lead attorney? But we never got an answer to that. And I, I don't know if they, were never asked. I'm very disappointed.
I agree with that. I don't know the answer to that. I was just stating the prior is what transpired. Yep.
I, my, I was there that night and my recollection, and, because I would have certainly followed up with them. We actually used Andrews and Price for our special education law. And so I would have certainly followed up with them. My understanding that evening is we were down to two firms once we left. And it was, it was DeDaro, Matta, and Cambest, Mialo, Brongo, and Mialo. And so I, the reason, I mean, I could have followed up with that. However, it really wasn't where we were in terms of, in terms of that selection process. And so in fairness to, to Andrews and Price, I, I did not follow up. But in all fairness, we were down to, we were down to two. And I really didn't want to contact any of the attorneys on, on my own.
I agree with that. Exactly. We were down to two. And that was a board decision to be down to two. And those were the two that we were down to.
We went down to, we took them out of the mix because of what Ed just brought up about the limitations of that attorney that was going to be assigned to us.
Correct.
So that was where we had asked if somebody else could be appointed. And that information was never relayed.
The board agreed to two.
And the other side of that, the other question was, given the number of attorneys on staff and the number of school districts that they were representing, that would we receive the appropriate attention? So those were the two factors, but we were really, from my understanding, down to two attorneys.
You were down to two firms. How are you going to do, you're just abstaining or what?
I will, I will, I have to make a pick. And again, no disrespect, or no disrespect to Mr. Matta, I'll abstain.
You abstain?
I will abstain. If I have to make a pick-up too, I'll abstain.
Very good.
Mr. Weinman.
DMC.
Mr. Yant.
I abstained based upon my reasons stated.
Mr. Krasinski.
I can't see for either candidate.
DMC.
Mr. Azalina.
DMC.
Mr. Kuzloski.
DeDaro, Matta, and Cambest.
Mr. Yingling.
DMC.
DeDaro, Matta, and Cambest.
Pardon me?
DeDaro, Matta, and Cambest.
What was the total?
Five, two abstains, and two MBMs.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's, I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you, everybody.
Who was the second?